Morning, everyone. We're going to call this meeting to order at nine thirty-two. And can I have adoption of the agenda, please? The recommendation.
That the West Elgin hereby adopts the agenda as presented.
Mover, please. Chair. Presser, seconded. All in favor? It's carried. A disclosure of any peculiar interest. Seeing none, and at this stage, I'm going to vacate the chair at nine thirty-two. Presser.
Good morning. My name is councillor Telly, and I will chair this meeting now. So we're going on to number four of our agenda, which is filling the vacancy of the office of the mayor. Applications are all listed in order on your agenda there. I believe they were listed as per as the applications came in. So. Okay. Good morning, Trevor. Nice to see you as well.
Good morning, everybody.
Morning. So we'll go ahead. Each applicant is invited to address council for more, no more than five minutes. So just give you a second there, Mr. Letham, to get situated. All good? And go ahead with your five-minute submission. At this time. You have the floor.
Okay, thank you. Thanks. After twelve and a half years of being on council, I feel more than committed. I feel committed more than ever to our community. I've seen the ups and downs on being on council, but always trying to do the best for everyone. When I was first elected, I won by a nice margin of votes. The next term, I won by four to one margin. Then I went for deputy mayor and was acclaimed. Everyone on council got changed. All the council members and mayor were new. I was the only one left from all council. This term, I was acclaimed yet again, so I know I have the public support behind me. I know if given the chance to become mayor, I will give it my all as I feel I have done in the past. There is also so much to be done, and I think some hard times ahead. I know with a good council and staff, we can get through it. As mayor, you have to wear many hats. But you must always remember that is the community that put you there. I am so proud to be part of West Elgin, and we can make it even a better place. I recognize I would have big boots to fill, but I can tell you now it would not be from the lack of trying. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that submission, and then we'll go on to the next candidate on our list here. I'm going to try for your last name. Let's see.
Oh, don't try. Andre, it's enough.
Andre. Okay, Andre. You have Kovalevsky. All right.
Pretty close, yeah.
You have the five minutes, then. You have the floor.
Oh, ladies and gentlemen, esteemed council members and fellow citizens of West Lauren, those who are on Zoom, who are here. I'm honored to stand before you today, grateful for this opportunity to address our community. The time for change has arrived, and that is why I have chosen to participate in this campaign. Being new to our community is not a disadvantage, I think, but it's an advantage that allows me to bring fresh perspectives and experience from my time in southwestern Ontario and four different countries I lived for the last fifty-two years now. With a medical degree as my first higher education achievement, I initially dedicated myself to direct patient care. However, as my journey progressed, my passion shifted towards public health and healthcare management. Additionally, I have successfully ventured into the realm of the real estate development, serving as the success, as have successfully ventured into the realm, as the CEO of shopping mall project in my hometown. This experience has proved me with the value insight into running a municipality, developing crucial infrastructure and attracting investors in anchor businesses. So that's how the real estate development is similar to the running municipality. We need some kind of strong anchors here. Now let me introduce my vision for the future of West Elgin. Firstly, I believe in diversifying our economic development efforts. We must attract new investors and transition from relying solely on industrial and agricultural employers to embrace the potential of hospitality business. Secondly, we must reevaluate the leadership within our local educational institution. It is our responsibility to provide our children with an education that equips them to comply effectively on the broader job market. Lastly, it is essential that we pre-arrata, pre-arrata, my dry mouth, no water here. Put in priority the revitalization of the core centers of both Rodney and West Lauren. By offering incentives and support, we can breathe new life into these areas, making them vibrant hubs of activity once again. To achieve the goals, I am committed in to involving our community in the decision-making process. I propose the formation of working groups dedicated to specific projects, allowing citizens to actively contribute their ideas and expertise. Collaboration with local businesses, and not all only local, will also be a priority as I firmly believe that together we can achieve remarkable results. Leadership and integrity are value that guide me in every endeavor. I promise transparency in my work, establishing a personal social media platform that enables direct communication between community members and myself. As evidence of my commitment to accountability, no decision will be made without the preliminary consensus of both council members and citizens. With my background as a registered massage therapist, I do still have business in Windsor and real estate professional, just recently graduated and start practicing. I understand that importance of ethical conduct in public effort and in public office. Before concluding, I have an exciting announcements to make. My wife and I have decided to offer the wall of our building on two twenty-five Graham Street facing Main Street for a historic mural, no matter what would be the decision of the council. This mural will showcase the rich history of our community, honoring important individuals and community leaders. However, it is our community who will have the final say and decision who deserve to be represented in this remarkable piece of artwork. In closing, I want to express my deepest gratitude to you, to your time and your attention. I stand before you today to reaffirm my unwavering commitment to serve our municipality together. Let us embark on this journey of progress, unity, and prosperity. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. And we'll go on to the next candidate, Mr. Fawcett.
Hi, Derek. Everybody, my name is Kevin Fawcett. My wife and I have lived in Rodney for four years in March. And I really, really enjoy it. I'm looking forward to.
Thank you. I'm looking forward to the question part of it because my background is quite varied. I've done a lot of different things, which I think would help as far as input for helping guide or different observations. I've been almost every state in the US and almost every province in Canada, except the Northwest, Northwest Territories up there. So you see a lot of different views, a lot of different ways how cities operate, businesses operate. I meet a lot of people. I've always, I've always had to work. So if something changes or economy changes or circumstances change, I've never been without work. I continue to work and just adapt, and I'm always learning. Right now presently, I'm a commercial truck driver, almost twenty-eight years. I'm a driver trainer. But the industry is changing. It's changed quite a bit. I agree with the deputy mayor. We're in for a lot of big changes, both economically, security-wise. The money system is going to be changing. We're in a unique spot, I believe, where we are, right in between Chatham and London. So I think that opens us up for a big economic hub for people that don't want to live in the city, that live in the rural community. It's nice and quiet, so I think you have to respect a lot of the people that are longtime people from here. They might not want the hustle and bustle. That's the reason a lot of them came out here, aside from family, families that may have already lived here. I would like to be able to contribute to the community I live in. With the job that I have right now, I'm away all the time. I've been away a lot. So I'm not able to commit to a lot of things. I used to coach eight-to-ten-year-old hockey. I used to do baseball. But when I became a truck driver, that all had to go by the wayside because I was over the road all way all the time, and I couldn't commit to time. So I'd like to change that. I'm getting later on in my years. And I enjoy, I'm constantly up on the news all the time. I think that's an important thing. Because there's so many different avenues of news, it's hard to balance what goes on. I think that's something that changes daily and would affect decision-making, short and long term. Most of you probably have never seen me or don't recognize me, but you may know my wife. She works at the deli bakery in Rodney, at the Rodney Market. So she probably recognizes you. Other than that, thank you very much for your time. Like I said, I really look forward to the questions because I'm sure I would be surprised if there's a question I haven't heard before. Thank you very much, and good luck to everybody. And thanks again, Deputy Mayor. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. And now on to our fourth candidate, Christian, and you have the floor.
Thank you, everybody. My name is Christian. My wife and I got, we moved to West Lauren about three years ago. I know a lot of people talk about the difficulty and the issues that West Algon is going through. But people don't understand is that where there is issues, some people see issues, others see opportunity. The more I get involved in the community in the past three years, the decision that we, we decided to move to West Algon for is because we see our future here. We don't see issues. We don't see mistakes. We see opportunity for actually the community to thrive. One of the main reasons we loved West Algon was the people itself. We didn't decide to move here for, you know, land-wise or investments or anything like that. The way that we purchase things is we literally went and talked to everybody around, and that's what made us want to move here. The opportunity that has been given us for us to order to understand how West Algon works individually as itself as a business owner and as an entrepreneur has given me an ability to see things from a different point of view. We can all talk about emotions and things that make us guide ourselves and stuff like that. But the reality is that this is run with numbers, and it's a business, right? This is not just feelings. We have to be able to actually adequately move something properly from one side to another. I have, I was lucky enough to be invited to the fair board, and I've been there for about six months now. And I've been trying to help them out with the accounting department, and the more I understand and the more I'm starting to dig, the more I'm understanding how West Algon has been working for, you know, not one year, not two years, not ten years. And I'm like, my position, how I present everything, it's, I think we are ready for change. Things need to be changing. The new generation is here. We are prepared. We have studied. We are educated. We're entrepreneurs. We're ready to be led. We're ready to lead. We're ready to be given the reins in order for us to actually give an opportunity to truly work as a community and stop being individuals and truly calling as a community. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate that. So we're going to our fifth candidate, Trevor Lee. You have the floor, Mr. Lee.
Good morning, fellow candidates and councillors and the people of West Elgin. Hopefully, everybody can hear me fine. I just want to say good morning to everybody, and I thank, thank you all for this opportunity. My family and I have only been in, in the Rodney area for just around a year. And we were actually brought out to this area actually due to the, the current housing issues that we faced coming out of Hamilton. We wanted to get into a home and, and, you know, fortunately for us, we were able to purchase one here in Rodney. Now luckily for me, I do work from home, so I'm not commuting every, every day in, you know, a two-hour drive into the city. Having said that, I work in the transportation industry, been in operations and billing for the last thirty years. And in twenty nineteen, I decided to throw my hat into the ring in the federal politics. So I ran with the Hamilton mountain riding. I didn't have the, the success that I was hoping for, but it was a great opportunity and extremely huge learning opportunity as well to see how, I guess, the, the political field and how it all works behind the scenes. My, my number one driver, I guess, for, for, for presenting myself, putting myself into this mayoral candidate race is really is just about growth in our community and becoming more whole as a community. I think some of the other candidates have touched on it that we, we're going to start seeing some really big changes. Not all of them are going to be good as well. You know, we have a lot of different agendas are going to be put in place, and then I can, I find that it's going to be extremely important for our municipality to really come together as a community to be there for one another and, and learn from different people. Maybe some know how to garden, some know other life skills. And it's not, I'm not talking all doom and gloom, but it's just all a matter of making sure that we're all here together. And then as, as a community, then we can grow, we can be better prepared for what's, what the future is, is going to be presenting to us as the one candidate mentioned, we're going to have a change in the monetary system. We're going to be going digital. And I, I see that as, as a big problem because now you have accountability for everything. And but this is the stuff that, that a lot of the people in our community may not be aware of, of what's coming. So I think as a leader in the community, we have to be the ones that are teaching and, and making sure that people are aware. So that's why I'm here today. So to, to have that opportunity to be able to sit in, in, in the seat and counsel and to, you know, help guide us through the next, next few years. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. And thank you for everybody. It's not easy to put yourself out there. We all know. And I think it's great that you've all put yourselves out there and done that, just like we all have ourselves. So we'll move on to four point two of the agenda, which is the question period. Each council member permitted for two questions each for each applicant. And then after we're done hearing your submissions, we're going to take a short recess. So we'll go ahead. So we'll start. Do you want me to do them in order? You're thinking again? This makes sense. Yeah. Okay, so we'll go ahead and councillor Vakas, councillor Denning? Ladies first, okay?
No, can I just say clarification? So I'm going to ask all of my candidates, all of my questions, then we'll move on. Okay.
I'm councillor of Board One. So Board One consists of Rodney and Clacken and all that area. So. So I'll go ahead with my questions here. So, Mr. Letham, my first question is, what has you running for the mayor's position at this time versus during election time in twenty twenty-two?
Why I didn't?
Yeah. What has you running now and not then?
I, because the, the, the show, the long and short of it was, I respected our mayor. And I'll be quite honest, I know I couldn't do quite as good a job as our mayor did. And that was the reason. I realized that. I was deputy mayor the year before, and I was, I was asked to go for mayor by a lot of the public, but I know in myself that Mr. McFail was the man to be mayor. I wa, I, I wasn't up to quite his standard, and I admit that totally. Now Mr. McFail's gone, and I was hoping to step into his chair.
And the second question I have is, in your opinion, what are the most pressing issues? How would you go resolving those issues?
As regards being mayor?
Yes.
Well.
I know there's a bunch. The whole world. Just turn on the TV. Yeah.
Well, now, you know, Mr. McFail's gone, and I've been put in that chair as since, and, and when he was also away on, on leave or whatever holidays. I sort of got a little feel to it, and I like that responsibility, I have to admit. And I, I've also gone on to the county, which has given me another outlook on council altogether, too. So I feel that was the driving, the driving factors that is, is that, given that responsibility, I, I, I realized that I can do the job.
Andre, I have the same question for the, what has you running for the mayor's position now versus when we had the election a few months ago?
I wasn't eligible at that time.
That's an easy answer. There you go.
Just changed my address. We just moved from Merlin here. Well, it took some time for me. I moved on September, and then it took some time for me to change the documents and to register here.
And then my other question is, are you familiar with corporate budgets and how are you equipped to handle municipal budget?
I'm, I'm familiar with corporate budgets. I, I don't like finances, but I'm pretty good with numbers. And what, what made me to be able to get to the point as we are here right now, in twelve years being in Canada, we just came here with almost like everybody was, immigrants over here with zero. As you, as you probably know, now we own the property, which was probably about five hundred million, a thousand dollars, right? At least in twelve years, and I think it's a pretty good achievement. Even we started to work in Limited in greenhouses for the first year. Been delivering pizza, so on. So the corporate budget, yes. It has to be efficient. The municipal structures have to be efficient. When I, when I learned how much, why we pay so much for the municipal water and finding that, just getting some numbers, I found that the running of this municipal water supply is probably inefficient enough. So we need to get into this topic a little bit in depth. So, and so probably you can say there are other municipal services might not be efficient enough. So that is the corporate budget answer.
Okay, thank you for that. Go on to Kevin now. Oh, I just lost my computer. Just a second here. Being on council has a lot of learning curves. How are you equipped to be educated on those topics and handle those?
I feel a hundred percent. I don't have any doubt in my mind about learning anything new. I've been with a variety of backgrounds that I have. I've had no problem, any hurdles, anything like that. I'm anxious to learn. I think that's part of what drives me in different things, being able to learn. And I've got a lot of people I've met over the years to draw from experiences. So I like to think I'm easy to get along with and like to try new things. Keeps life exciting.
My second question, your opinion, what are the most pressing issues in West Elgin? How would you go about resolving those?
Most pressing issues? I guess for me, personal observation would be security. Security, law enforcement. That's one thing that we don't have in like response time for any emergencies. So I think there's different laws that get taken advantage of because they know there's not a physical presence and response time. I'm not so sure what it's like in the rural end of it. But I know like if, for example, if I was in Rodney and had an emergency and called the police for people that aren't obeying the law or the rules of the municipality, it's very rare that there'd be a response. My other thing would be healthcare and response time, but that's something that's province and countrywide. That's a continuing thing. I think we're in pretty good shape overall because everything is fairly close. We are in the middle of two big hubs, Chatham and London. Newbury, we have the hospital there. And we just had the big construction in Rodney with the roadway, the water system and all that. So that shows me that they're progressing. That's something that doesn't happen overnight. It takes a long time to get to that stage, so I was pretty happy that I was able to be able to observe all that, and it affected the community that I live in. I'd like to see a better, a better fair, community fair. Because I think that's it's like a one-time event, kind of like candidate, but I think it's big in the eyes of kids and families. And I think that would I think there's a lot of families that want to move out of the city, but they just have to find something that, I always joke with friends, you can come to our area, but before you get here, remember there's no drive-throughs, which is great. But I know we have a new Tim Hortons coming in.
Yeah.
I believe. So they broke ground on that property, and that's good. But it's, it's a, it's a different pace of life here. It's nice when you can walk down the street and people say hi to you and smile. And I enjoy that. That makes me feel good.
Well, thank you for that. Christian, I just going to ask you the question in regards to what are the most pressing issues? Same one, and what, how are you going to resolve those issues?
Yeah, so this follows, I like to put all the issues that I have been experiencing with the past three years into just one big category, and it's called management, right? So for example, we go over with the gentleman, the candidate over here, he was wondering why the water in West Algon is such a difficulty. But again, that all goes down to management issues. We've been having a management, the more you dig and the more you get to actually see how West Algon community works, the more we start, start to understand that the main issues are pretty much management at the top. Because we see that the only people that get damaged are business owners, your average citizen and your normal community, right? Because nobody understands, like, for example, I take, I live very close by Natterjack where the water treatment is. And individuals that have been in this community for long enough will understand pretty much why are we as West Algon having one of the cleanest water in many places, having a lot of facilities? We actually lack, even, this is how I like to see it. Some people are, even if you have money and opportunity, some people are just not able to proceed at a level that's adequate enough in order to actually truly solve. Uh, some people are just not able to proceed at a level that's adequate enough in order to actually truly solve an issue. So the answer is never nor money nor thinking. No, 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 that's actually a mentality. Where we actually get to understand what's actually happening. We could move from the water treatment. We can also move to, for example, um. You can pretty much see how it is because time has gone by now. We're looking at a west, west Algon is not new, right? But if you look at the past fifty years, you start to see, for example, uh, the developers that we were supposed to let our land grow. Uh, developers, um, either one way or people don't understand how business work or how contracts should be lent to or how it should function. Uh, we should not have people coming to our, you know, I like to call it our town now and our, on our community, right? Because my goal is to live here. I don't have kids yet, but I'm hoping, you know, setting everything up for the future I can. But the more you get to understand, it's, uh, people are able to just come into our community, take and not give back. And that's because we let them. We, it's either, uh, either we have a lack of management or we either have a lack of understanding how things work. Or there's many things that are involving into a charade of a lot of issues, right? But mostly, you gotta remember all this information and rules and and legis- legisments and everything on it. It's pretty much comes right off from the Canadian government itself. We don't have to like make up new things and stuff like that. The problem is along the lines. Many people lose themselves, right? This is why, um, it's very important for West Algon. To start letting the new people truly enjoy the activities because we are able to see things, not us and like just, oh, we're just gonna brush off. What happened with the water or what? We're just gonna brush off what happened with investors. We're gonna brush off this, this, this and that. It's very complicated because at the end of the, at the end of the day, the people that suffer is the people that are not living there. For example, you can walk down the streets of West Lorne itself and it's kind of like. Mind-blowing that we are in a first world country and we're still having issues and difficulties with things that we should not longer have difficulties with in Canada. And again, um. Uh, uh, this is a business, right? Cause this is how Canada sees this community and sees what we're doing here and this is a business. And it's a business, we have rules, we got the contracts, we got things to follow, right? And all of this pretty much follows into management, right? Sadly, we, um, with, with Algon is, um, very old community. Right? And things don't longer work the long, the the old way. We have new, like, um, gentlemen, we're talking about new currency coming in, new things. That doesn't scare the young people. New things don't scare us. It it actually makes us thrive. Because we know now the old ways don't work because we have tried them for years. Like it's not one nor two. We're on year like fifty and we still want to keep doing the things the old way. This is why. One of the best ways to, uh, pretty much help to start things, it's like what I decided to do with the building that I purchased in West, uh, West Lorne, right beside the home hardware. You pretty much have to tear everything down almost and rebuild properly because you don't know what's behind the walls. You don't know if mold is gonna be building there. You don't know what the plumbing's like. You don't know what the electrical side is like. Now imagine when we're talking about a community that manages thousands of people, right? But again, um, we are lucky enough that we actually have help. From the government itself and explains us and helps us how each thing should be taken care of accordingly. This is why at the end of the day. We get punished for not doing things properly. That's why. The water facility down my house has issues now. You know what I mean? But again, best way to solve things is to, um. Instead of patching them, rebuild them.
And my other question was, what are your visions or projects important for the community of West Elgin to you?
There is many projects that are coming in this community, but, um. Like I was talking about bringing, uh, project managers here and people to, you know, build the land and such like that. We should not only be thinking about getting bigger, because we already have what we need. We should be able to repolish what we have. We need the people in the community to be able to be at a level where they feel comfortable. Like when you walk out, for example, at St. West Lorne here, when you go walk out to, um, out to lunch. And you talk to the business owner, because those are the people that are actually truly. That are helping us guide the things, you know, your homeowners, your business, people that are trying to build and stuff like that. We want to make those feel feel, people feel uncomfortable, but we also got to remember, not everybody's as lucky or fortunate as others. We also have to be able to start creating activities and things. And instead of us, uh. Setting up things for investors or other people to do nothing with the land, I'm pretty sure we'll be able to refurbish things. So we can help our own community with the people that are least fortunate and do it in a proper way. We don't want to just, you know. Give them things to their hands or their do it. It'll be more like an activity where we actually teach people skills. Like we gotta do this as a community now. Instead of trying to expand, we gotta polish what we have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. We'll move on to our fifth candidate, Mr. Lee, with my two questions. So, um, what has you running for the mayor's position now instead of running a few months ago in October?
Well, at that time, I I felt that I hadn't been in the community long enough, uh, so, um. I, not that I didn't think about it, um, I actually was thinking more on a counselor, uh, position. But, uh, you know, now that this opportunity has unfortunately been presented. I just figure that, you know, I've been here now a little bit longer, almost a year now, and I thought that a better time than the present.
Okay, thank you for that. And my second question is, are you familiar with corporate budgets and how are you equipped to deal with a municipal budget?
Yeah, well, I mean, I don't have a lot of experience in the municipal budget, but, uh, in the corporate side, I I have led, um. Numerous operation teams and have come up with and done budgets for the departments that I managed. Um, but again, uh, you know, we have a great team, um, who have done, now I think, a great job with the budgets in the past. And obviously it would be a, a learning experience on one part, but, uh, you, you know, at the same time being able to put, uh, you know. My ideas or input into it, uh, would, you know, would help and, like I said, I'm just open to learning. Um, like I don't have a lot of experience in it, but I do have some.
Thank you. Thank you for your answers. Okay, we'll go on to our word two counselor, Mr. Denning with his questions.
Thank you very much. Sticking to the, uh, the sequence that's already been established, Mr. Latham. What initiatives or ideas do you have in mind, um, should you be our mayor that you would, and how would you prioritize them?
I think first of all. We've really got to look at affordable housing. That, you know, what COVID did to the prices of houses for local people has absolutely taken people. They're just out of the market and rents have gone up so expensive. So I'm thinking, oh, I'm looking for affordable housing first. I'm not like some, I think we need more population. To make things run, uh, properly. We need more population, more houses to make our services run more efficiently. Uh, as regards water, sewage and everything, sharing it between more people makes it more economical. And my big, big worry, I have a large worry. And that's when the battery plant is finally built in St. Thomas. And Amazon at the Elford plant. They're going to offer big wages, that after five thousand workers. And they're going to take a lot of people from West Elgon over there. Our factories now are struggling, trying to keep. Employment going. They can't get enough workers as it is. And if they take, just say, out of the five thousand, five hundred. Four hundred out of West Elgon, we're in deep trouble. So we've got to start thinking about getting more people in here. If we could, affordable housing and things like that, where. Parents can leave, uh, move, move to a smaller house, a cheaper house. And that their children and that can stay here, afford to stay here, that I think that we've got to be looking at. We've got to look in the future for that because this is going to happen. It's not. It's not just a myth. It, it really is gonna happen. It happened when the Ford plant was going. That, that was the wealth of, um, West Elgon. They were the high rate, you know, workers. And look what happened when they finished. So I think we've got to look ahead and look ahead now before it happens.
Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Kovaleski. First of all, thank you so much for your offer to, uh, have your wall as a mural for our community. That's, that's great. Appreciate that. So you and your family have been busy restoring the building on the corner. And if you were our mayor. How would you encourage other business owners to do the same thing in both of our downtown sectors?
I would do the same as Windsor did. They impose the vacancy taxes. If you don't have anything, if you don't improve your property, you are given specific period of time, you should do it. Or other than that, you're gonna have to pay double taxes on your property. You're given an opportunity. If you're not capable to do it yourself, sell the building, let somebody else do it.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Christian. You mentioned in your application that, uh, the, it was important for you to recognize the social and developmental needs. Of our community. If you were our mayor, how would you specifically address the, the social and developmental needs in this community going forward?
Um, again, like I was saying, since, uh, we have so many, uh, issues on the social side, one of the best things is for us to start creating, uh. Opportunities for individuals to not only, uh, sleep there and do things like that, but actually provide them with skills. Because this is what's gonna help our community at the end of the day, because we do need people with skills. We need not only more people, but we need these individuals to actually be trained and to be educated and what they need to. In order for us to actually truly grow.
Thank you very much. Kevin. So you had mentioned that, uh, you do have some experience in, uh, in the real estate profession.
Yep.
So.
Through just over three years.
Three years in real estate in, in urban areas.
Yeah, I did Hamilton, Ontario, that's where I started. And then I moved to Frankfurt, just north of Trenton, Trenton, Belvoir area.
So using that experience, if you were our mayor, how would you allow those skills that you've obtained transcend into helping develop our community?
Well, I think, uh, Deputy Mayor Latham was a hundred percent right in everything he said. And one of the ideas that I've had for a long time is if there's a big price gap between like apartment condos. And the houses that are being built now. And I always wondered why they never built anything more like the old wartime houses. Or like in the States, a lot of places build houses on slabs. To hit that price point, make it more affordable, and a lot of people don't need a big home. Like my wife constantly tells me, we don't need twelve, fourteen hundred square feet. But that's, that's what's there. It's got a basement. So that's an opportunity, I think, that's. Always there and I think that would hit on exactly what Deputy Mayor Latham said. That we need more houses for people to be able to afford to come in and that also increases your tax base. Which helps pay for everything else and development proceeds from there. Uh, I think with the factories. Maybe not in Windsor now, but Windsor and St. Thomas, what's going on there? I think you're getting a generation of people that don't necessarily. Mind the commute. They like being out of the city. And myself, right now, I travel back and forth to London every day. It's not a lot for me because I'm in the transportation business, so it's not a big deal for a lot of people. It is. We also have to consider the people in the community here that don't have a vehicle or can't drive. Um, and I think. The income from the companies outside that are being built now. Yes, the people may work there, but they're gonna spend money here and help get things moving here as well, I think. I think, uh, people that have a larger. All of a sudden, they go from maybe a sixty thousand dollar a year income to maybe eighty or ninety thousand. Now they're gonna be able to afford to do things. Opportunities will come up. Maybe they'll want to fill the stores that are vacant. Down the road here, they're vacant. And so they'll have, it will create opportunities. Uh, and then. That in turn will attract. Smaller business, businesses will come when the business, one of the other ideas, real estate wise. There's a big chunk of property at the four oh one Burnham Road. Uh, and I just, I think all the time because I'm driving a lot. Um, one of the things I always thought of is, why couldn't there be something like a St. Jacobs Market there? Something, we're on the biggest traffic corridor in Ontario, that four oh one. Uh, millions and millions of people go through there every day, plus the communities. The northern communities, you got Chatham, Windsor, just like the people would come to Ikea if they built the Ikea in London. There's not one close by, so there's not a lot of places to go. I think something like the St. Jacobs Market would attract a lot of people. It would help all the farmers and growers around here, give them an avenue to. Sell their stuff and it would be like a landmark. Um, another thing, when I used to live in Vinland. They had something, I believe it was around the Thanksgiving weekend, and it was called a craft fair. And it grew so big that the whole weekend, it was almost like Victoria, Victoria Avenue in Vinland is like the main. Drag off the highway. And it was almost closed the whole weekend because it was so many vendors and vendors would come from all over Ontario. To book their places a year, year and a half in advance. And it was like a big, not a street party. But all the families, there'd be stuff for kids to do, all different kinds of crafts, and it just kept growing. Every year it grew, grew, and then that's when the wineries all started to grow. So that was another big avenue. I know we don't really have the wineries out here, but there's, I think there's always opportunity. And I think just being able to act, I think we have a lot more freedom here. Not like being in some of the towns where there's big restrictions. I think we're open here and we're still, I think, growing. I think that's a good thing. So I think. I can't say much more about it, but I, I think it's, I could go on and on, I think. Forever. It's just, I, I find it really exciting because I think there's a lot to. The only thing that worries me, I guess, you don't want to lose young people. Uh, because you need young people to grow and have their, I'm always learning new things. Even the grandkids are teaching me to do things. So I, I think that's a good thing to attract people. And, uh. I wish from the, from the history that I've looked into in our area. I wish they could almost do like, uh, uh. An old western town, bring it back to the wooden boardwalks down and make it like, kind of like a retro. Town in a little section, like, uh, I remember I had friends that lived in Paris, Ontario. Where the cars all park on an angle down the street and it's, uh, some people enjoy it. They'll just go there for the weekend. But I mean, when it gets overdeveloped, that's what drives some of the people away. So you kind of have to respect. And what I've looked at, it sounds like from anybody I've talked to, the reason that. The area where I live anyway, a lot of stuff happened when the tobacco industry went down and moved away. So then that's what. Pulled a lot of people out of the community. Again, just like the Deputy Mayor said, which could happen. With the big manufacturing plants going on that way and we, but I think we have a lot of people that have been here for a long time. And, uh, I think the people that are here love to be here and, uh, want to preserve that. I look forward to trying to be, help to do that.
Thank you very much. Mr. Lee. If you were our mayor, what would your priorities be?
Well, thank you for the question. Um, priorities, I believe, is going to be more on the. It's the economic stability that we're gonna have here in our municipality and how we want to grow as a community. Myself, like, came, coming here from, from Hamilton. Um, I love the fact that I could sit on the front porch and, and have a tractor drive down the street. You don't see that in the cities. And I believe that a lot of the people here are here because of that reason. It, it's a small community. Yes, do we need it to grow? Absolutely. But it's the growth that could get out of control. That will drive people away because now it's too busy. Uh, it's a fine line. Some of the, the vision that I would have for our communities, uh, like Ro- Rodney, West Lorne, is making it more of a, a destination. For people to get away from those big cities, having it more like a little Victorian village. Um, where you have all the shops are now open. They're thriving because people come here to get away from the hustle and bustle. Uh, which then, you know, what helps the municipality bring in the tax dollars from, you know, rent or whatever it is. Uh, the stores are now open longer because there's many of the stores that are here, especially in Rodney. I, I, I kind of scratched my head. I, I don't understand how they would even be able to stay open when they're only open a couple days a week. And for limited hours and, uh, and it's just due to the, the traffic, there, there's not enough. Um, but again, having said that. Um, but again, having said that, it's a fine line because you have too much traffic. And then people aren't gonna want to, you know, come downtown into the 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 uh, you know, the downtown sections of these of these communities. So i- it's it's getting the proper investors uh, to come in and to have the vision that I see and many other people see is that is to make it a destination for people to wanna come in to have some bed and breakfasts here, have uh, some type of a spa. Uh, where we're close, we have the water, you know, ten minutes, uh, you know, either way that you go um, out of our municipality, you have the lake. Um, that's a, that's a draw for tourism to get people to come out this way. Yes, do you wanna have some larger uh, companies like factories open up close by? Of course, um, I mean, I, I, like, again, I mentioned that I do work from home, but I do commute into Mississauga once a week. So we are more like a commuter uh, type of a community, a lot of people do commute to work outside of, out of here, but why they came here, it it there, it's a double, kind of a double edged sword, why why people do move out this way, like for ourselves. Um, Deputy Mayor mentioned about affordable housing. Well, the the issue with the housing is it wasn't due to COVID, they, the 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 prices of houses were increasing for the last, you know, almost ten years now. Um, we were pushed out here due to the fact that we couldn't afford anything in the city. Um, and you get into like towns like Branford or Woodstock, uh, everywhere you go, the prices just kept going up and up and up. And like I said, luckily, we we found Rodney and we were able to purchase a home here. Um, now, it's still affordable compared to what you get, you know, a couple hours east. But, you know, putting in, you know, housing, again, it it's gonna be another thing, because you wanna attract people here. Um, but is it affordable housing or having jobs that pay well? Well, I mean, also the cost of living should be going down as well, but again, a lot of this is more on the, you know, the federal side of things or provincial government side of things. Um, but we just need to create opportunities. Um, and they having like a vision of what our community should be will then attract people to come live here, work here, because there will be jobs available. And again, that helps the municipal government within tax revenues and then other incentives that we can then offer to businesses to keep them here or to attract them here. That's it.
Thank you very much, and and thank you to you all.
Thank you.
So I'll move on to uh, our Ward three councillor and her questions.
Hi, everybody. I really like interviewing. Um, so Richard, what are the three biggest challenges in West Elgin that we currently face? And as the only member right now who sits on council, can you identify three initiatives as a council member that you have put forward successfully that addresses those issues?
Okay, if you wanted to know of achievements as well. Well, I, if I I went to the county to get the 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 bike lanes that go from Alderborough Public School to um, Rodney. And we, the mayor at the time said that that can't be done, so I got directly onto the county. And when I talked to them, they changed their mind, and we finished up with our bike lanes. The other achievement was the lights over the four oh one. I found Rodney and Westlawn. Was the only intersections coming off the four oh one with no lighting. People were going by and went in snow and snowdrifts. It was just dangerous. Again, I got onto the county, told them what an issue it was. And um, before too long, with with a a lot of phone calls, the lights went on. The junctions, which everybody must appreciate, you can see them now before you actually get there. So I I I I I did a lot on that, you know, an awful lot. What I want to see happening is I want to see um, ma- water mains extended with flushing um, water down ditches for absolutely no reason. The only reason being is to keep them fresh. Uh, if they were li- li- linked into loops, then we could keep our own water fresh. It's costing as much for somebody to uh, to drink that water or us to process it in the plant as it is to put it in the ditch, so we might as well use everything we produce, which will certainly help out with costs. Tarmac, tarmac roads, we've got gravel roads here, they're absolutely costing us a fortune. Brian has doubled in price right now. Um, we we we're continually uh, gra- grading them, uh, putting new stone on, and then as soon as you do that, you've gotta brown them again. And if if we could just do one road a year and tarmac it, then you've got no more maintenance hardly on that road for years to come. And it's easy for snowplow, you're not throwing all your chippings onto the verge, so you gotta buy new to put on. And so I think that's uh, another great thing.
Andre, as someone new to the community and with your background in medical policy and reform, what are the challenges as you see them that the community of West Elgin currently faces in regards to health and wellness? As mayor, how would you address these issues?
The other day, I was walking by the Graham Street and some gentleman with lady, with older lady, but on the backseat, stopped and asked me, can I ask you a question? Uh, I go, yeah, sure. He goes like, where is the grocery store? I go, right here, Foodland. He goes like, where is the doctor's office? I go, we do have a health center. But the problem is, when I applied for the doctor myself, they told me I have to wait for a year to uh, be assigned to a family physician. Uh, I know Windsor has wonderful experience to attract doctors into the town now. They have no problem, even if it's a province-wide problem to have a family physicians. Uh, Windsor hired specifically individual, and and we're too small to do this. Uh, it who was specifically, whose agenda was specifically to attract doctors over here. So it's a, it's a general um, problem for us because because doctors also looking for some infrastructure to some schools their kids will go. And uh, by having high school four point one grade on the uh, four four point one point rating is not pretty much attractive, attractive to the people to uh, to keep their kids in this school, so it's a general problem. So we're gonna have to address small by small different issues and it will uh, will make com- community better in this, so it's not just one topic. I did participate in a huge healthcare reform back in my country with the participation of European Union under the uh, uh, experts from European Union, from Germany, we managed to establish uh, twenty uh, family practices for the community of one million, for the region of one million uh, inhabitants there, so I know how to do it inside with the working groups, with all uh, participating parties and shareholders with the provincial government. Sometimes maybe federal government, so the same about the housing problem. Uh, that Mister Letham mentioned, uh, it's not possible to, for us to afford the affordable housing our, by ourselves, we're gonna have to work as they did in Windsor again, they attracted provincial money to build the uh, affordable housing. In uh, Leamington, they decided to produce the pilot project with the tiny housing. Now, the uh, the uh, provincial legislation allows to build this tiny houses and the the building code was adjusted. So we need to, uh, as I mentioned previously, to create over here in the community some anchors for the businesses, uh, just, I'm just going to elaborate what that means in the hospitality business, some kind of something, something. A- a- and actually, uh, it reminds me a little like a brainstorm, all ideas who are, no matter who is going to be a mayor, mayor or councillor, uh, it's it's collection for you guys uh, to think about too. So those uh, issues, I'm probably, when I, when I just, before the meeting, I just did my homework. I I Googled the names of all candidates, and my name came up uh, as most popular. Um, I leave a lot of digital tracks, if you Google my first and last name, it will pull out a lot of interviews given to the media, so I know how to work with media, with CTV, uh, in including uh, I know you have to learn how to work with uh, media, because you need to know what you to say, what not to say and how to say. So uh, as the mayor need have to, the person has to be public, as public as possible. We need to come up with some kind of initiatives, like one city in uh, Ontario, I believe. They uh, offered the land for one dollar. It just went through the whole federal news and people started driving there, just to get the land for one uh, dollar and build the houses over there. We need to come up with something, what would be media, what would be interesting for the media.
Andre, I'm gonna stop you just because you answered three questions, and so it's not fair to the other candidates, but you, no, that's all right, thank you. Kevin, housing has certainly become a main talking point for most politicians. From West Elgin's perspective, what is your opinion on either Bill twenty-three or ninety-seven? And with many developers claiming there is lack of profit and affordable housing, as mayor, what steps would you take to find affordable housing developers? So the Ontario government, in order to address housing, has introduced Bill twenty-three and Bill ninety-seven. What is your opinion on those and how will they affect West Elgin's ability to develop?
I don't think West Elgin is gonna have any problem um, developing. Instead of just putting together one or two plans, I I think it's good, like he, the gentleman said about brainstorming. I I think if you put together five or six plans, and I don't mean like a a big plan like our official plan, I don't mean anything like that, but I just mean if you had a list of uh, five or ten different avenues you can go, because it's not just one area to develop, there's lots of different, like the redoing the roadways opens up more development as well. Uh, you could see the development in Dutton. That's working fine, and I think you're getting a lot of the people moving out of the big cities there, it's still close enough. Uh, I don't see anything holding us back, it's more a holdback for business because there's not enough traffic to accommodate the businesses. I think with the upgrades in the marina, I think that attracts a different crowd as well. And then there's still the development, just I believe to the west of that. Still, it's been in the works for a long time, but I mean, that's another thing that will automatically attract people. It could very well attract people that are from the trailer park and decide to retire into a condo, I think that's a, a big opportunity. Um, I think all the construction that's going on and the construction that's presently going on in our corridor of the highway. I think that will make things cleaner, just like the lighting coming off the highway, that's a real important issue. Um, and I was surprised when we moved out here. Um, the amount of, I shouldn't say utilities, but the quality of service that we have in comparison to the city, we don't have to wait. They come down, plow our road, no problem, lickety-split, usually twice. And the people in London, no, they don't know when their road's gonna get plowed, like it's it's little things, but they all add up. I get garbage collection, recycling, no problem, it's fantastic. Um, so there's a lot, i- it could just be a matter of um, like an advertising or media campaign to come out. Um, the price of real estate is constantly going up, that's another thing. You kind of have to be careful, you see, you'd seen in Woodstock or Ingersoll, when they had the plant, the auto plants there. All of a sudden, everything, all of it skyrocketed, so that makes it less affordable to a certain group. Um, my daughter used to live in Fort Mac before the fire. It was fantastic, they had great jobs, but then everything, everything in that town, the rents, the mortgages, everything, the price of everything, grocery stores was high. So i- it's it's all kind of relative, she had a hard time when she moved back out here. She was used to everything being more, but wow, I need to make more money, I, no, you don't. And and this is something that my financial advisor taught me a year or two ago, which I wish I had learned sooner. But really sit down and look at what you need to get by. You don't necessarily need to be making way up here, if you have everything you want and are comfortable and are happy, I think that is one thing that's a big saleable item. If you, certain, certain developers that just wanna uh, change everything, you're always gonna need development. Um, but I mean, a developer that wants to work with the character of a community, I think is more important. I think there's always gonna be lots of developers, uh, and there's always gonna be competition. I couldn't be more happier, and like I said, I've traveled all over, seen a lot of communities, one of the funniest stories I have is going to a community in Arizona, which I would go through on the way to California. And it was a big Walmart store, huge, like a super Walmart store, and down the road was like a mobile home park. And the funny thing, I couldn't understand, I would come through close to rush hour, and it was kind of on the outskirts of the city. So they had the sidewalk, lights were paved, the intersection had wider than normal lines on it. And then down the side of the sidewalk, they had a paved asphalt road. And what it was, was a golf cart path from the mobile park to the Walmart for the whole community. Because some of the seniors couldn't drive, they were close enough, they got all their supplies there. And it was, it was something different I'd never seen before, but I mean, they're going electric, golf carts are electric. I- i- it's, it might sound odd, but we have a big uh, retirement age portion of the community that necessarily can't get around, and I think is, what is it, the four counties transit that helps them? So that's been a big help for people that are like restricted to where they are. Um, I I I just think there's lots of opportunity here, and uh, I tell that to everybody I talk to, all my friends, I tell them all the time. And then they think, they think we're far away, I said, we're not, and so.
Christian, with the amalgamation of farms, the loss of tobacco farming and COVID, our two main streets been hard hit. Many economic developers and planners would point to a healthy main street as a key component to rural economic development and growth. What are the main challenges as you see it to our two main streets? And as mayor, what initiatives or strategies would you introduce to help grow and change our main streets?
So there is a lot of opportunity, especially on the main street. Um, after COVID hit, I understand inflation and many things have gone up. But um, one of the key things that I was talking about earlier, it's about developing skills in the community. Uh, people worry about um, things going up in price and stuff like that, but I'm few owners of the uh, main streets that I know in Westlawn and stuff like that. Uh, many of them have either networking or community or know somebody that actually has true skills for us to teach our community how to be one hundred percent sustainable. I had the opportunity to talk to a couple gentlemen that wanna open organic stores. And they're, they're willing to teach the community pretty much how to be sustainable yourself with the skill that they have developed towards farming, agricultural side, business side. Again, uh, the key to this is to pretty much take it as a community. It's an issue that not only the main streets dealing with, it's gonna be pretty much everybody around it. And we have a community that's smart enough for all of us to teach each other skills. We have enough land for all of us to actually teach. We have enough land for all of us to actually teach the people that don't have land or don't have opportunity to actually how to be sustainable themselves. Uh we have space even behind the main streets on the other side, we got a lot of networking and people that own, especially because we're in a farming. Community here, uh many of them already have generational information on how to, you know. Be sustainable pretty much by yourself and us providing uh multiple information in order for our community to have true skills. We can not only like provide housing for them and things like that, because we're in the long term, you don't wanna give like, just like the banks, right? The banks give you a twenty-five year loan because they're expecting you to fail, right? And that's the same thing that's happening when you build a house and you do things like that. Especially developers and all of that, they're hoping you fail, they hope you don't have the skills to sustain it, they're hoping you're not able to pay mortgage, they hope you don't. Develop skills to sustain yourself, this is the reason why inflation is able to go up, because people have forgotten how to develop skills, they're like, oh, food is very expensive. I'm like, it's not if you grow it in your in your garden, it takes an eight by eight to do it, but the problem is, we are lacking community. Because we have the people here, and I seen especially since I've been enjoying a couple boards and especially the fair board, I seen how much actually true knowledge. The old generation has in actual farming and sustaining themselves. Those individuals will not be affected by inflation, by food going up and things like that, and I believe. Especially the people that are in charge of the main street will be a key point for us to actually get the community together and truly start teaching people how to develop. Uh more than just a house, more than just a living, how to truly develop skills for them to be like sustainable themselves.
And then last but not least, Trevor. With increasing political divisiveness at the provincial and federal level. What role do you think political politics, party politics should play at the municipal level? As someone who has aligned themselves with a particular party, as mayor, how will you ensure? That you are representing all members of the West Elgin community if their views don't represent the party you align with?
Great question, um yes, well, we see, you know, um. Especially on the federal side, it seems like they're uh really just, you know, the same, same wings or, you know, two wings of the same bird. Um, there really isn't any kind of division there other than, you know, they put on a nice spectacle during their question period. Um, now, yeah, when it comes down to the municipal level, yeah, obviously, like I I did run in the federal election, so obviously I was. Um, you know, pretty to one, one party, um but it actually just comes down to being open to debate. And having the conversations, um yes, you're not always gonna see eye to eye with with the people. It could be your neighbor, it could be your spouse, it could be, you know, your children, uh people, you know, in your community. But if you have a good conversation, open dialogue, there, you will always find some middle ground. Um, and that's how I've always approached uh these type of issues and or or if there were questions. Um, it's just to have, have the talk, have a debate about it, um you know, and hear both sides. Um, cause like I said, you will, at the end of the day, you will always find a middle ground, you know, you might always, might not always agree with it, but. Um, as long as you, you have open dialogue and you're able to communicate, uh you will come to a resolution.
So after all your submissions, thank you very much, uh and we're just gonna take a short uh recess now. Go ahead, Kevin.
I just forgot to say one thing and I just. I feel like I should get it off my chest, this is probably, probably one of the most difficult things I've ever. Trying to put my experience on one page.
Yeah.
Was very difficult, I found, and it was also difficult. Uh, kind of applying for a job with no job description or expectations. I just, it was really funny, really strange, and I just thought I should make that comment.
Well, thank you for that, thank you for that, yeah, there's always the unknown, so. Uh, you gotta do all the things that you should have, could have, would have, you don't wanna have a should have, could have, would have, so you put yourself out there, good for you guys, that's great. All right, we'll have a for recess now, thank you. Okay, welcome back again from a recess, it is uh we're getting back into session here at ten fifty-five AM. Okay, so we'll. How did you wanna proceed? Just go ahead with uh resolution, or not sorry, resolution with uh nomination? Okay, so looking for um words from the floor regarding a nomination for our candidates.
Gentlemen, I'd like to thank you all for putting your names forward, I know how difficult it is. Um, I was saying it earlier and to members of the public, I. I'm hopeful that next time we do something like this, that we get a bit more diversification at the table. But I'm really happy that you guys did this, I think it's important to have conversation about our community with new members. That being said. I appreciate that all of you answered the questions to the best of your ability. But as someone who is new to council and understands that they have a lot to learn still. The position of mayor requires someone who has a full understanding of municipal politics, municipal budgets. And how things work, and I think that most of you, all of you need more time, and I'm hopeful that if a council seat comes up, that you would consider it. I don't feel comfortable putting any of your names forward for mayor, as we need someone. Who has some experience to guide council over the next four years, in my opinion. Which is why I'm nominating Richard, the deputy mayor, to continue in the seat that he's seating. Is not that I don't think any of you would have amazing things to offer this community, but I do believe that the mayor's seat. Is the most important and we need the person with the most experience. I'm nominating Richard.
Thank you, so uh looking for a second nomination. Opening the floor for that.
I will second councillor Navakis's motion.
Okay, thank you for that, um if, am I able to say where, so looking for uh. Uh, sorry, I'm losing my thought here, so going ahead with the two nominations, the uh first and second, I'm looking for all in favor. So I'm also in favor for that, so we're gonna have a bit of discussion about it before we do an all in favor. So um my thoughts are, I'm new to this community from two thousand and one I arrived. So I know the love of this community when you first come and wanting to help out and volunteering and such. And with councillor Vax's words, it kind of echoes what I was thinking when many of you were talking about what great ideas and the love of this community you have. It'd be great to see you all volunteering, I know you already are a Christian, but and immersing yourself with other things that are in the community. And um do hope if something else opens up that you do come back and and uh show your interest again.
Thank you, ma'am chair. I'd just like to note that um uh I think that this has been a really tremendous experience, not only for the folks in this room, the folks at home. And our entire community, uh this morning, a lot of great ideas have emerged. And I think also that uh there's been an emergence of some great new community leaders. I wanna thank each and every one of you for taking the time to to put yourself out there and uh and. Become really a a an additional part of our community, you've already can, that all, each and every one of you have started to do your part in this community, but you've taken it to the next level. So, so thank you so much, all, all of your efforts continue to make our community stronger. And to reiterate uh what councillor Telia and councillor Navakis has said. Uh, we look forward to seeing all of you, um you know, continue to participate um in in future, so thank you.
It would be really great if next election, we don't have any acclamations. Yeah.
Does that mean there's an opening?
Yes.
I knew about some people. Yep. All right, go ahead, Madam Clerk, give me the resolution.
Moved by councillor Nevada, seconded by councillor Gunning, that's councillor of the municipality of West Elgin, nominate center of points, Richard Letham. To fill the vacancy of the office of the mayor, all in favor?
All right, thank you for your time, we'll go on to the confirming by law.
Yes, um and deputy mayor Letham can resume the chair at eleven AM. That bylaw number twenty twenty-three thirty-seven being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the special media of council held on the eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. Be read at first, second, and third and final time. That the council of the municipality of West Elgin hereby adjourns the special council meeting at eleven oh one to remit at nine thirty AM on May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three. We're at the call of the chair.
Moving.
Thank you, everyone.